All right, let's start the City of Milton Common Council meeting and call it to order on Tuesday, June 15th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Yes, the meeting notice was posted at Cooley's Piggly Wiggly, Dave's Ace Hardware, and the Milton City Hall.
And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
So Teresa raises her hand.
Sorry, second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In terms of the agenda, just so folks are aware, item number 20 is a presentation from our auditor, and she will be joining us around 7 o'clock. So in the event that we get to that item and it's not 7 o'clock, we can jump back to it. Or in the event that we get to that item, or in the event that it's 7 o'clock and we're at a different item, it may be nice for her to be able to just jump to that item if that's okay with everybody as well.
Hey, just quick, we're missing Ryan too. Have you heard anything from Ryan?
Yeah, you're right.
Do we not have a cor-?
I think Mark was
Well, come on, jump up and down or something.
Okay, Linda is coming on right now, so let's give her a second.
Okay, so do we need to start over?
No, you've not taken any action yet.
We approved the agenda, didn't we? Or no, we didn't?
I think I may have interrupted your vote.
Thank goodness you did.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, but
There's a motion.
Shall I move approval of the agenda again?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? We have an agenda and we have a meeting. All right, pledge of allegiance over Inga's shoulder. Everybody ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Got it. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council actions. So we can have this a public comment now if anyone would like to comment or if they would like to wait until their agenda item is before the council. Okay, seeing no one, I will go on to our mayoral proclamation. So today, we are going to be proclaiming June 2021 as Dairy Month. And some of you may have already attended the June Dairy Month breakfast. And yay for you if you did. Whereas Wisconsin is recognized nationally and globally as a leader in the dairy industry. And whereas 23% of the total dairy farms in the US are in Wisconsin. And whereas the Wisconsin dairy industry creates 154,000 jobs and generates $45.6 billion each year for the state's economy. And whereas, according to the dairy farmers of Wisconsin, 95% of Wisconsin dairy farms are family-owned. And whereas during this challenging year, Wisconsin dairy farmers were deemed essential workers and were committed to our community by working every day to provide us with nutritious dairy products. And whereas June Dairy Month started as a way to distribute extra milk during the warm months of summer and became the official Dairy Month by 1939. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2021 as Dairy Month. Further, the City of Milton encourages all residents to recognize dairy farmers and the dairy industry for their contributions to our economy and to our dairy health. Yay for ice cream and custard. And cones on a dairy queen. Okay. City of Milton proclamation, June 2021, the great outdoors month. Whereas, Wisconsin Knights, we pride ourselves on the variety of recreational opportunities our state has to offer, many of which involve the great outdoors and enjoying our natural resources. And whereas Wisconsin's forests, trails, recreation areas, national parks, over 100 state parks, and more reflect every facet of our state's rich natural and cultural history. And whereas, Wisconsin's outdoor recreation industry directly supports 168,000 jobs. And its economic impact is estimated at almost $18 billion annually. And whereas, enjoyment of our great outdoors provides all Wisconsin Knights with the opportunity to celebrate our longstanding history of natural resource stewardship and to renew our commitment to protecting and appreciating our air, water, wildlife, and land. And whereas, Wisconsin has established the Office of Outdoor Recreation, one of the only states in the Midwest, to create an office dedicated exclusively to promoting outdoor pursuits. And whereas, this month, the state of Wisconsin celebrates the partnership of federal, state, and local agencies, the recreation and tourism industries, and recreationists, which makes outdoor recreation opportunities available and continually adds new and needed features such as improved trails, like the Ice Age Trail, water access points, boat landings, and park enhancements. Now, therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim June 2021 as Great Outdoors Month and urge all citizens and visitors from other states and countries to escape the indoors by exploring, enjoying, protecting, and conserving Milton's great outdoors. So we'll sign that, June 15th, 2021. And if you do go out on the Ice Age Trails, where your spray, the deer flies are really incredible right now. Okay, approval of consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone to post? Okay, that motion carries. All right, I'm trying to not have so many shadows. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding Milton Farmers Market application for special event permit.
Oh, at our last meeting, this item came up on the agenda for discussion. There was an amendment or revision to the special event permit request for the Milton Farmers Market to close the road along Parkview Drive. The Common Council agreed to do so, but also added the caveat that they would like to revisit this after the June 3rd Farmers Market to see how it went. So we have brought this item back with a few pieces of information included in this packet, including just a couple of comments we got from the public about it, as well as the report from the officer that was on duty. At this point, it's up to the Common Council if they'd like to continue with the special event permit request to have the road closed between 4:30 and 8:00 as they approved back on June 1st, or if there is other revisions they'd like to see to the event. And I see Nikki is on with us tonight as well.
What were the comments?
From the officer that was on duty, included that in the memo. I won't read the whole thing, but basically just thought that everything went well. However, he said, and these are his words, however, I don't believe they needed the road to be closed on Parkview. It sounded like there was more than a few people who were upset about parking situations, but it didn't receive any complaints directly. I think it would be a better option for them to move the car show at North Goodrich Park and keep the parking stalls open on Parkview Drive in front of the businesses as well as parking lots south of the Farmers Market. Said he was contacted by the car show organizer asking them to have vehicles towed, but they weren't able to do that, so they made contact with some of those car owners and were able to get them moved. It sounds like that resolved itself. There was an individual who contacted the city that said that they had handicap plates and that they were told they couldn't park on Parkview. However, we know from city staff they were allowing that, so perhaps it was just a miscommunication. And then we did receive an additional complaint from one of the previous, one of the business owners on Parkview Drive who had previously voiced their concerns about it. So those are the three that we are aware of. If you want, first one was just the report from the officer, so I don't want to classify that as complaint, just an observation, I guess.
Okay.
So the one, I don't know if this is the same one you're referring to I had gotten.
Yes, it's that one.
Okay, so it was a vendor that was trying to park, I think, in where the car show was and couldn't find a handicap parking, so.
And if you will, I think I would agree with that. My husband and I came in and we were looking for a handicap spot. And fortunately, the woman that we knew was standing right there and could accommodate us. Whereas if she hadn't been there, Dan's wife was standing right there and could let us in. If she hadn't been there that knew us, we would have had trouble getting through those gates to get to a handicap spot. And so it wasn't really an open issue that you really had to say, hey, I need to get through those gates and explain what you were doing. And so I would empathize with someone else that didn't know their way around it to get to a handicap spot.
And I do think that you know, it went well for the most part. And we all did anticipate that there might be modifications or changes with how it's structured just moving forward because it's new. And we're all adjusting, including the businesses. And a couple of the businesses have had some challenges. And I can comment a little bit more on that a little bit later, but I guess I'll just go around and check in with people. Teresa, did you have anything else to add?
I was just wondering if they had checked with the other people, the business people in the that were there as part of it to see if they felt that their attendance was suffering at all by the new setup that they felt.
The vendors, are you talking about?
Yes, if they felt that fewer people attended because of the parking, that they couldn't get close enough, or, I mean, maybe it wasn't. It just seemed like fewer people were there to me.
Do you want me to comment and respond to all this now, or do you want to wait? Yeah. So, okay. So, a couple things. The city actually gave us handicap signs. So TLC was manning once the road was closed to let people in. And we had plenty of open parking for handicap because right in front of my shop on Parkview was closed. And that is where the gentleman from Public Works that delivered the barricades to shut the road off recommended we have handicap parking. And we had plenty of open spots. And anyone that was looking for a handicap spot, and it was marked, we had marked, we had two different markers on each end of the road, it was available. So I don't know, I only had one person ask me if there was extra handicap parking, and I directed them right to where they needed to go, and there wasn't an issue. And then we also had another vendor that is handicap that actually parked in the handicap stall in the Farmers Market. So I'm not really sure about the confusion where the handicap parking was, but we had it marked. And if anyone needed any closer parking, there was plenty of parking in front of our shop, which was where the road was closed. And the reason that there were probably fewer people at this one was because we didn't have a live broadcast with WJVL. And also, you've got to think, it was right in the middle of graduation. Graduation was that day. So people had different things to attend and different events to go to. We still did have a lot of people, but we actually, it was more of like a steady stream of people instead of having lots and lots of people all when it opened and then at the end. And from, again, from what I had heard from other business owners that wanted to share their thoughts. They thought that it went really well, so I really don't know what else to comment about the road closure. I just think that when you have big events like this, it's the duty of the city and then obviously the people that are running it to make everyone feel safe. And there were tons of kids running around. And I think the road closure helped ensure and put parents' minds at ease that their kids like could actually walk around and not have to worry about cars running. Because on the other side of the street on Parkview, there's no sidewalk. It's a very thin strip of median for that parking lot. So they have to cross the street in order to actually walk anywhere.
Teresa, did you have any follow-up questions? Teresa, I can't hear you. No, no, okay. Okay. Linda, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I attended the event and I have to say that I was pleasantly surprised at the crowd that was there because of all the stuff that was going on. I had parked at the Bank of Milton. There was one other car there. When I walked up, the cars that were coming up off of College Street, I was telling them that there was parking there. I think it was just people that were actually, I don't know if they were looking for signs to park here and park there. But I have to say, I liked having the street closed because I tried to look at some of the cars. And I just didn't feel real good about if I was to bring kids even on that side to look at the car if the street wasn't closed. I feel like it would have been, I feel like it just would have been hard. It was, I did, I had made two attempts to go downtown and speak to the salon who gave us their first concerns and the karate place. But I know he's only there, just, he's not there all the time. A bench might be nice in the area there if we're going to continue to do this. And I, it's mainly, I guess, for any of the older people that have been over to the market. It is, there was a lot of people that were just standing around on the sidewalk just talking to each other. And I thought that was great. And I spoke to a lot of the vendors. Actually, I spoke to pretty much all of them. They were all very happy to be there and they were excited about the Farmers Market in general and looking forward to doing it for the rest of the summer. So I guess that's all I have to say. I think it was a good thing and I would support it as maybe if we could do some, you know. I don't know, Nikki. I know that you can put up 100 signs in a window and nobody reads it anyway, but maybe, maybe the situation with the parking and the handicap could be just defined a little bit, maybe if the people that were standing there had specific apparel on, you know, maybe that, just something to designate them as, hey, I'm the guy that's moving the, moving things around.
So when you say moving, are you talking about how to let people know that they can, that someone will move those barriers?
Right.
So, yeah, so those, both barriers on both ends, there were people attending those barriers because we wanted to provide more handicap parking. Because when, when they dropped off the barricades, probably around noon last, the Thursday that the Farmers Market was, I went out with the gentleman from Public Works. There were two gentlemen. They were super nice and I forget their names. But we looked at it and then he made a couple of suggestions. And he gave me two different handicap signage that I guess they use for other events. And he was like, place this here and here. And we did that on both ends of the block. And then I had two people, one on each side, man the barricades of where the street was closed. So if someone needed handicap parking, they were literally right there, right across the street. And then I also had handicap parking actually in the market for any like handicap visitors. And I even thought about opening it up to other people to park in the school, but then I thought that that really wouldn't be safe when you have people walking around the market and then you're trying to direct someone to a handicap stall that's in the very back part of the parking lot towards the school. But I'm actually out in front of the parking lot now, but there's probably like 15 to 20 spaces that we had saved for handicap.
And I saw that, I did see the people manning, manning both ends of it. I just, I think for the end down by TLC, I just think that maybe there might, I could see where there could have been a little confusion there. And that's where I'm saying maybe just better identification of
Okay.
what it is.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people were actually standing around just doing the day and talking. And so, you know, the identification, I think, would help.
Okay, yeah, because those signs, now that I think about it, because I'm looking kind of on the block where it was, they're on those really short, like one-sided barricades. They're really small. I don't know the proper name for them, but they're, so the signs are attached to them and they're really low to the grounds. You can't, I mean, I guess, if, I'll have to talk to Public Works. Maybe I can put it in front of the barricade so they actually can see the handicap sign because they were on the corner, now that I think about it, where it had the, it had handicap parking and had the handicap sign, so.
Yeah, I thought it was a great event. I'm looking forward to it. And I know a lot of people that I spoke with that were just there. It's great too.
And then I forgot to address as well, so someone had said something about, I think it was Al, about getting cars towed. No one ever asked for cars towed. I'm actually the one that called the non-emergency number because the mayor, the last time we had the meeting, suggested involving the police department with this because that's school property across the street. And we just asked that the officer, just, there were a couple of cars left and we didn't know who they were. And we, I actually called him to actually see the best way of going about it because we had talked to Mrs. Kramer and Mrs. Kramer agreed as well. So I only called not to get anyone towed, but to actually just see if there was some assistance that the officer could help us with. But there was no like asking of getting anyone towed. And we would never tow anyone for that or ask for anyone to get towed.
Yeah, so that was in the officer's report. So it wasn't me saying it. It was what our police officer said, so.
Okay.
He heard, he heard it from someone and whether that was
Probably Rip, maybe. I don't know, but it wasn't, it wasn't from me because I'm, we just wanted some assistance because I know the mayor had said last time to call the non-emergency number and had talked to the police for any, you know, assistance or help. And so we were trying to close that lot down and we were more successful this time with closing it down. It's just we had a couple of cars and I think it ended up being some people that were cleaning actually for the school. And so we just wanted to have someone help, I guess, identify whose they were. So if they could be moved, they could be moved. But we actually had two tenants upstairs that are not in good health that actually left their cars there because it was just easier for them. But we had, obviously, we had talked to them prior to the day of the market, but they actually left their cars in the corner of the parking lot.
Yeah, the officer's report says "they" asked if the cars could be towed. So in this context, I'm not sure who "they" is. But, you know, whether it was Rip or somebody else, that was the officer's report. Those are not my words.
Okay, well, I don't want anyone towed. I don't know, but.
Yeah, and just to clarify, my intent was if you're having safety traffic issues, not just general, I mean, I don't want our officers to be used in ways that aren't related to safety or traffic, safety issues.
That's really to parking and keeping everyone out of that lot so they wouldn't get hit by cars.
Devin?
I don't have anything additional to add.
Ryan?
Good, touch back a little bit on something Linda talked about. The people you had manning the barricades to let handicap parking in, were they wearing anything that made them stand out? Or just normal clothes? Like, did they have high vis vests or anything?
No.
Because if not, you might want to do that in the future.
Yep, no, I mean, and we will, but no, he had, they both had TLC shirts on because it's the car show right across the street and Rip has way more employees than I do.
That's fine. I just wanted to point out that if they weren't having simple cheap high vis vests, might be enough to help indicate that there's somebody who knows what they're doing there, who can direct, you know, not only help with handicap, but could also direct with any questions, stuff like that. That way it doesn't get escalated too far. You have people who kind of stand out as knowing what needs to be known and done.
Bill?
I don't have any additional questions.
Anything for anybody else? So, since it seems right now that there's at least a couple of issues regarding how, how this is impacting other businesses. We have had discussions with the chamber and they're not trying to pick winners or losers, but I know that they were going to look into whether there were some suggestions that they could offer and try to walk around and look at the area where the Farmers Market was at. And I know that they're going to do that this week. And I'm wondering if we might want to have the chamber have an opportunity to talk to some other businesses and talk with Nikki and see if there's some other suggestions that they might have if the council wanted to consider about, since we're having so many council meetings. Maybe what your thoughts were on talking about this at the next council meeting after some questions are clarified with the other businesses and maybe talking about some of the suggestions that you all had with handicap parking. Go ahead, Linda.
I guess I kind of feel like for Nikki and Bob, I feel like they're both chamber members. And I know that they have spoken to their neighbors. It is a new thing and there's always, there's always going to be some type of confusion, I believe, on Greenman Street just because of the size of the street. Maybe we should have just one side of the street parking. I don't know. I guess, I guess I have full confidence that Nikki in the chamber, you know, that they'll come up with something and look at our suggestions. And it's not like, there's not a lot of people putting money into actually having this event. And that's a very important thing to keep in mind, so.
So I talk to Danny actually almost daily. I am very active in the chamber. And regarding any conflict with other businesses, I know my husband and I have really tried to resolve them. To be honest, and again, I'm speaking because I've put a lot of work into this and it's really disheartening when people are unable to compromise when you're trying to do everything in your power to compromise and give solutions. But I can't make other entrepreneurs want to do more. I can't make them want to capitalize on business and more people and community development and community involvement. I can't make them. I can only control what I do and I can only provide people with opportunities. I can only lead a horse to water. And for my, and again, and I've spoke with Danny about this, I can only try to make things work and apologize or whatever I may do to try to make the situation better when they have a duty as well. And that honestly is my, I guess, largest frustration with this whole thing is this is a lot of time and a lot of money out of my own pocket that I'm not getting reimbursed for from anyone. And I want to do this because I want to make Milton better. But no one that gives the, and again, and I'm probably being rude, but no one that gives these suggestions ever is around to help. No one is ever around to do anything. It's always constructive criticism or a criticism and just negative, I guess, what I've heard and seen. But there's no one there that is willing to offer a solution and actually help fix it or actually offer any solution on how to fix it. It's, well, you need to do this, you need to do that. Or actually, um, offering a solution on how to fix it. It's well, you need to do this, you need to do that. And this is how it is. And then, and then that's it. And I'm just supposed to accommodate people because they don't like something. And I don't think that's right. When I'm trying to do something for the community. There needs to be some reciprocation from the other ends. And it can't just be me trying to help and then, you know, I can only meet in the middle so much.
Are you speaking of your, your neighboring businesses?
Yes, yes. Cause I've tried, you know, like we've really tried. And that's the thing is like, I just like, fighting is not what I want to do. It's, it's negative. It's negative space, energy. I honestly don't have time for it. I, I'm, I'm a travel ICU nurse. I'm gone two to three nights a week. Um, I fly eight or I fly home or I drive home every week. And I also run a business that I have multiple locations for. So I literally don't ever sleep. So I honestly don't have time for any of the negativity and drama and all the other stuff that, that other people on the block want to create. So I just, yeah, it's just very disheartening. And, and like I said, I can only lead a horse to water. I can't make them drink. And I can't make them want to do things. Cause like right now I can show you actually have parents that were on the sidewalk. We're openly tonight having, actually having an event. So I stepped out of my own event to come to this meeting. Um, we actually brought parents in from the karate studio to come shop in our store with our event tonight. So it's all about turning negatives into positives and earning people's business. So.
I feel like this is just something that we've been working towards for a very long time. And I know that there's, but there's always going to be somebody that, that has, that has a complaint about how it's done, or maybe should have been this or could have been that. But Nikki is very right about that. It takes a lot to organize this type of an event. We all know that.
Right.
That from Civil War living history days, we know that from Wally Fest. Um, I'm sorry that these businesses in Goodrich Square don't want to take advantage of the opportunity that is there. But.
But that, but that's a good idea, uh, and a rationale to have the, the, uh, MAC and the city council work together because then we are sure that we have the support of the entire community. And that we all know what's going on and we can all back everything together.
Right.
And it's not that everyone's checking up on everyone else, but that we all are supporting what's going on. So yes, I would like to, uh, bring it back to the next council meeting and make sure that we're all working together to meet the same goals.
And that's the next special meeting that we're having?
Uh, that's up to.
Know what you're thinking, Al?
Yeah. So we, we, we haven't got to this item on the agenda yet, but we were talking about potentially having a special meeting next week to talk about the final plat for the North Janesville Street. And we already have a special meeting scheduled for June 29th. Um, I think June 29th would be the appropriate one because.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah. I don't know that would be, there'd be enough time to organize a meeting with the chamber between now and next week, Tuesday. But, uh, you know, as far as that, Aneesa and I spoke with the chamber last week, Wednesday, and they had indicated that they were going to try to kind of schedule a pow wow. And I haven't heard that that has transpired or scheduled or that conversation is even taking place yet. So.
I'm at the 29th. I was just, I'm getting my weeks, uh, crossed, but I was thinking the 29th.
And I think we all have, we all have same goal. And you know, I'm no expert in farmer's markets. City council isn't an expert in farmer's markets. But we do, um, want to have a, you know, a positive experience, just like Nikki does. And when there's opportunities for us to continue to work through things, um, and make it better, like Nikki said, like we want to make things better, have a better experience that if the, the chamber is willing, um, to be a positive support for all the businesses, then that might be, it might be an opportunity, um, for us to think about it. And, um, so I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that information. So if they could take that into consideration. Um, Bill, do you have any questions or comments?
I, I guess my only comment would, would be, uh, maybe we should invite Nikki to be a city council person since she's coming to all our meetings. Um, the, the, uh, you know, that obviously is facetious, but, uh, the, um, the framework I think is such that, uh, you know, if we're going to do this, and it sounds like a good idea to me to get the chamber involved and, and, uh, uh, you know, have them sort of, uh, a little bit in the middle. Uh, uh, on, on, on this. Um, however, I think that we then should make a decision, uh, at that follow-up meeting. Um, you know, we can't expect, uh, Nikki to be coming to every city council meeting and they have things ping pong back and forth, uh, you know, one way, one time and, and another way the next time. So, uh, I would be supportive of, um, saying, uh, no, let's get it on the agenda for the 29th. Uh, and let's make a decision, uh, on the 29th that, uh, is going to carry through, uh, all of the, uh, anticipated dates.
Yeah. And I guess if, um, you know, a meeting takes place, um, by Friday of this week, I'm, I'm not pressuring anybody. Um, then certainly we could have it on the Tuesday agenda. I just don't want to be unfair to anybody or anybody's schedule. Um, Nikki's especially when, you know, she said how much traveling she does. Like, so give people some time to schedule something. Um, and I, um, I know that Nikki says, has been in contact with Danny. So I'm assuming that Nikki will be in contact with Danny tomorrow to follow up too. So, um, is there a motion then?
Oh, I have a question.
Sure.
What is the date of your July farmer's market?
It's July first is the, is the next market.
It's July first?
Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm. That Thursday, the first Thursday of July. Yeah. So it's July, yes, July first.
I feel like this is not a very good situation for Nikki if we're gonna wait until.
It was, yeah. It's just, it's a lot of stress. Um, cause then I'm trying to figure. It's just stressful because the last time we did it under the gun, um, and I actually, and I don't know if this is another idea we can throw in there. I did speak to both of the gentlemen, um, that set up the barricades and whatnot. Um, and he told me, cause I told him, I'm like, I would love to meet with you and see what you thought and like go over some things. So I don't know, um, if I can include him maybe with the chamber and talk about that as well with him, um, from Public Works. But I'm, this is the thing, even though I travel, I'm available by phone. I can take my lunch break or something. Or, um, if it's after seven thirty, once I get off, I can Skype or whatnot. So, I mean, I, I can make it work. I'm available.
I think that that's just something that we need to keep in mind and let's us be flexible. Because that is very close to the actual day of what this is. I was going to suggest, let's go with, because it is so close. I was going to suggest that maybe what we should do is, um, go with the next one as is. With the information that we have presented, which is pretty much the handicap parking situation and the, the barriers. And then, you know, let the, let the chamber look at it while it's going on and then come back. But I just feel like it, in doing this type of an event and, and waiting so close to the last minute, just makes me nervous.
Well, we, we don't have to if the, if they meet in the next three days. Uh, my understanding and speaking with Danny, it was like this week they were going to have something, um, figured out.
I have, I've talked to Danny yesterday actually on the phone and I've been made aware of no meeting of any kind.
Yeah. Her, 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 um, what is, it's a subcommittee was meeting. I actually talked to her right before this meeting. And she said that she, that they're, um, they were meeting and that they were likely going to have recommendations this week. So.
Can we?
Let's come to the council.
Can we maybe just get that information by email? I mean, I just know what it's like to put on a large event. And I don't want to discourage other people from doing this either.
So, and I have a question with this subcommittee. Am I going to be involved in that? Because how would they know information that they need when they're not involved with any of it?
My understanding is, it's a chamber. Yeah.
No, I, I know it's a chamber. It's a committee on the chamber. But what I'm saying is, I'm the organizer of the event. Shouldn't I be included in that meeting with the subcommittee? Wouldn't that?
You'd, you'd have to talk to the chamber.
Yeah. My understanding is Danny.
We don't control the chamber. We don't control the subcommittee. We don't.
Right. And I understand that. I'm just saying like, this is all very last minute. And like, if you want information, wouldn't you want the organizer there, like that? You know what I'm saying? That doesn't make a lot of sense. And this is all like very last minute.
Yeah. Well, I would agree. And, and it sounds like you talk to Danny every day or every other day. So I would say when you talk to her tomorrow, ask her because she's the chamber. We are not the chamber.
Okay. You're.
Just see, see what, see how it works out. See how it, it works out because, um, it's not to put, uh, to not issue a permit for the next farmer's market. It's to hear recommendations from the chamber. And after you speak with the chamber, and if there's other businesses that have some resolutions that they would like to discuss. It's just to get that input. So the, the council has the best information to.
Are we talking about the road closure? Or what are we, I'm, I'm not, I guess I'm not following. I'm trying to do like fifteen things.
I think it's at the, any, um, concerns that we have heard and any concerns that the chamber may have heard. Or any ideas that they might have to be supportive of all of the businesses on the outside of town.
Okay.
Aneesa, if I can interject, yes, the only part that's the approval for, from the council is for the road closure. The farmer's market prior to this was already approved by the police chief, public works director and myself. And this is just for the road closure since it's now on public premise or right of way.
Cause I, I feel like these meetings, it's just getting, and again, and I'm not trying to be offensive, but it's very frustrating for me as a business owner, doing this again on my own time. Is we have these meetings, but this is really just about the road closure. And this is not like, uh, other things that I, you know, that I have to, to follow. Like, do you know what I mean? I don't have a committee for the farmer's market. It's my employees, my husband and my family. And this is simply about the road closure. And I feel like sometimes these meetings go in like eight different directions about what shouldn't, shouldn't be done. And this is simply about the road closure. And that's why I'm like, like, I've talked to Danny, yes, multiple times and I talk to her weekly. But like, there's been nothing mentioned to me about anything like that. And like I said, I control other people's behavior and how they behave and act and what they choose to like or dislike. So.
So it's up to the council, how they would like to proceed.
I don't think that Nikki realizes that she's not, that she muted. There she.
Okay. No, I just, I, this is the thing. I can't, I guess, my whole thing is, I can't, I can't cater to everyone. You know, like you either love it or you don't. And if there's something I can fix, then more than willing to help. But I can't always just be like, oh, you don't like that? I'm going to change it. Like, that's just not how life works. And again, it's all supposed to be just about the road closure, not about whether someone loves the farmer's market or not. And if they don't, I mean, that's on them. Like, it's just, again, it's very frustrating. I, I do talk to Danny weekly, but like, nothing, none of this was ever brought up at all. And honestly, like, I don't have time to be a therapist for other businesses. Like, they don't like it. I don't know what to say. And, and I already got it approved with the school and I, I'm not moving it. Like, I'm not moving it to Schilberg. That was what, um, the, the guy from martial arts wanted. Well, no, I'm sorry, sir. Every other business that's been in my location has died because they don't care about their business. They don't put as much time and effort as I do. Have a successful business. They have four locations. I'm not moving it. So I just, again, I'm very frustrated. I probably should just bow out now. But I guess if someone let me know if you guys approve it, it's just, again, it's very disheartening that there's all these other issues brought up that I have to be, um, to fix when we're just voting on the road closure.
Right. And actually nobody's asking you to fix anything. What, um, I'm doing is giving information that the chamber has given us and letting the council decide how they would like to proceed. So if someone would like to make a motion, Teresa?
I, like we said before, I would like to see the, I don't know how to make the motion. I would like to have the, uh, the chamber meet and discuss this issue and then bring it back. Whether it's next Tuesday or the following Tuesday, whichever we can work together in terms of timing and discuss it. Can you put that into a motion? Uh, to find out from Danny or, uh, here when we can discuss it. Just find out when they have time to meet so that we can schedule it.
Mark, do you have a, uh, recommendation for the motion?
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Yeah. It sounds like it'd be a motion to continue consideration of the Milton Farmer's Market application for special event permit to the next meeting of the common council.
Teresa.
Uh, well, yes, I mean, can we cut, do you want me to contact Danny tomorrow morning and find out? So I can get your date?
The, I, you, you can, but to the next, the most next available meeting, I guess.
Okay.
I would second.
Good.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
And anyone opposed?
I. And I, for the record, I would just like to say that my opposition is, I think, because it is just the road. I think it would be better suited going to, um, Public Works for the road. And then it maybe in the following week, go back to the chamber.
Add two or three more steps. Okay. As far as I can tell, that motion, um, passed and we're going to go on to the next item agenda, which is discussion and possible action regarding the Milton Food Truck Rally application for special events permit.
And I will take this one. So with this new unearthed ordinance for special events, we did realize that the Milton Food Shark Rally includes two food trucks on the Milton Public Library's premise and which is a public premise. And so we do need approval from Public Works and from the council based on the special event ordinance. Public Works has recommended to approve the application for special event permit. The event will happen on August 29th and it will be held from nine AM to three PM.
I would move approval of the special, uh, permit, special event permit.
I'll second that.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Hi.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay. That motion carries. Discussion, possible action regarding a final residential subdivision plot for two sixty North Janesville.
This item was placed on the agenda in anticipation of a final plat being received for the, uh, planned subdivision at two sixty North Janesville Street. As you may recall, this was a subdivision that had gone through the approval process back in November of 2019 at the plan commission level. Uh, this is two sixty North Janesville Street is commonly referred to in Milton terms as the Liptkey, uh, property. At that time, Matt Bonson had planned to develop that site. Uh, he never moved forward with a final subdivision plat and subsequently listed the land for sale. Uh, at this time, uh, Woodfield Homes is, is in the process of purchasing that site. And wanted to blink, bring forward a final plat this evening. Uh, but we received word late yesterday from his surveyor that he wouldn't be able to accommodate that schedule. So, um, we talked with the plan commission earlier today about potentially having a special meeting next week. Uh, that the plan commission could review the final plat and then the common council could review the final plat thereafter. Um, and the plan commission was in, was in support of that. So that's what we would be, um, hoping for as well. So in essence, this item, there's no action to be taken on it. Uh, I've heard back from the majority of the council that they are available next week. So that would be the next steps in this process. They indicated to us that they would have the final plat to us by Thursday. Um, the plat will look almost identical to the preliminary plat that I included in the agenda. But I wanted to keep this on the agenda to give folks, uh, an update as to where that was in the process. So. Um, the plat will look almost identical to the preliminary plat that I included in the agenda, but I wanted to keep this on the agenda to give folks an update as to where that was in the process, so.
No action needed.
No action.
What was the date of the meeting, Al?
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Twenty second.
Okay, thank you.
We were hoping for five, but if that doesn't work, we can do six, or we can do seven, or.
Five is fine.
Okay.
Is that considered official? Five o'clock Tuesday?
I can send out an email tomorrow about it, to confirm.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Okay. Um, item eleven, a commercial facade grant for two thirty Merchant Row, discussion and possible action.
So Kelly Whitney, the owner of the building located at two thirty Merchant Row, has requested a commercial facade grant in the amount of nine thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty cents to do a wide variety of improvements to the exterior of that building, painting, uh, painting, um, windows and awning, uh, repairs. Uh, so she has a number of contractors and a number of proposals uh, that add up to eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-one, so the commercial facade grant, if for fifty percent, or it's a fifty percent matching, um, so the, the request would be for nine thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty cents, and she would uh, pending approval, she would like to start a lot of those improvements as soon as possible, and she already has some folks lined up, so. Um, it's nice to see, again, that, that's a building that sat vacant for years and years and years and years and years, and we have a property owner who is re revitalized that and re-energized that site, and is continuing to invest in it, and it's um, you know, really the, it is really the goal of this, of this program, and it's nice to see it being effectuated.
Any questions, comments?
I would move approval of the facade grant.
Second.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments?
No.
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone to post? Uh, discussion and possible action regarding an emergency roof repair at the Milton Public Library.
I can, I'll kind of kick this one off, and it, yeah, Mark's here, okay. Um, so as I indicated in the memo, you may recall back during the budget deliberations last November, we set, we started to set aside some money for a roof repair for the library that we knew was coming. Unfortunately, there's kind of been a confluence of events that have caused the deterioration of the roof to, uh, you know, really kind of precipitate much faster than anybody had planned. Um, it has subsequently started to damage the interior of the building, and you could see in the attachments that I sent in a matter of three days, it went from basically no noticeable damage on the inside of the building to three days later, Paul Smith having to poke a hole in the ceiling to release the water. Uh, so it's really, it really is a, it really is a kind of a situation that's only gonna get worse. Um, so by statute, we are allowed to declare a repair emergency, so long as the public works committee reviews and approves a resolution, and they did do that tonight at five thirty. Since we put together this memo, uh, and sent this out on Friday, uh, we have contacted another vendor potentially to solicit a second quote. Um, so tonight, uh, we would be, uh, really, this is somewhat more of an informational piece for you tonight, and then if that second quote, which they have told us will come back on Thursday of this week, is better than what we have seen, uh, then, then we would kind of revise some of the documentation and bring this back to you next week, Tuesday as well. If it's not, then we would bring forth the Garland quote and ask for, uh, funding. Today, Dan sent out a second memo to kind of show how the funding would be put together for this, obviously, this is an unbudgeted expense, and it's not one that's very inexpensive, so Dan put together the second memo that kind of outlines the potential funding sources, including fund balance and residual capital dollars, as well as the money that was previously set aside, uh, can get us to that one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar number, but we're hoping with the second quote, that number may go down. Additionally, in my memo, talked about that there may be, that there will be additional repairs necessary on the interior of the building, but speaking with Attorney Schrader, uh, we felt that that really couldn't be deemed as an emergency, the interior repairs. So we will be bringing back an item, uh, at a future date with a funding source to do those interior repairs. Uh, it's really, we need to get the roof fixed ASAP, so the damage can, to the interior of the building can stop. Um, so, uh, that's kind of where we're at with the process. Mark, did you want to add anything to that?
I think you, uh, explained it really well.
Well, thank you.
Linda?
I just have a question, I was kind of wondering why we are not looking at a steel roof? I didn't, all of the roof information given us here is S, everything is aesthetic, let's see. Mineral surfaced. Should we be looking at a steel roof for this building?
No, this is a flat roof, so steel normally isn't used in that application. The additional quote we're asking for does offer some different materials other than uh, the, the rubber membrane that's there, or other, or the mineral roof that's quoted, so we're just trying to explore alternatives here.
So then, will we
As quick as we can.
Will we try to put some kind of a pitch, so that it's not a flat?
There, there is a pitch on the roof, and it's it's done in a way that a rubber membrane roof is normally done, it's just that the age of the roof, and the seams that are used in the, in the installation of the roof, they don't last forever, the roof is twenty-five plus years old, so it's at that point where, we, we knew this could come, and like Al said, it's came a little faster than we had hoped.
If, if you did put a pitched roof on there, you would have to do some engineering for the structure of the building. There's also, the rooftop units are up on the flat top of the roof, so you'd have a delay of the architecture, and then also getting a state approval, so you may not even have an approval for sixty days, besides the length of time to wait for a contractor to get there, so.
And it'd probably be double or triple the cost, too.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I guess, uh, my only question concerns the decision that the interior would not qualify as an emergency. Um, yeah, as I'm thinking about it, the, the potential of um, portion of the ceiling collapsing on, on an individual that was in the library, uh, possible mold, uh, you know, those kinds of things. Can that not be considered in terms of the emergency?
I would have to defer to Attorney Schrader on that one.
Understand what you're saying, and we have certainly considered whether or not that is the case, however, we have no evidence of that at this point in time, to point to, to say, there's evidence of, of substantial mold that's of, of a health risk to the community, or that there's a risk that the ceiling will fall in on anybody. Uh, but we do have strong evidence that without the repairs being made very soon, there's going to be substantial damage to the exterior roof structure, including the parapet, as I understand, and the sub roof structure itself, which will lead to substantial dam, more substantial damage to the interior, so uh, that is why we, I had advised that to focus on the exterior roof, where we have the clear knowledge of it, because it's a relatively limited exception to the to the bid requirements for the state statute, so we do need to be cautious about that, we can't literally apply that. And at this point in time, I don't think there's anything more than a wild guess on what, what needs to be done with the roof and costs. So, I understand what you're saying, but it's, it's, right now, it's just at the point fact-wise of what ifs, we don't, just don't have that developed yet.
It, it may be a moot, it may be a moot point anyway, we're not going to do the interior work until after the exterior stuff is taken care of, so, you know, whatever, whatever moves us forward most quickly, um, uh, so that we can, uh, get the repair made, or replacement done.
That was a thought, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Is there a motion? And then we'll get to Monica. Linda?
Are, um, I, I would make the motion, but do you, do you?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think we, we need a motion at this time, because we're still awaiting the second quote. We wouldn't, we, we don't want to, um, when we make the motion, we want to identify the, the actual amount and contractor, so until we get that second quote, um, which also may be a moot point, we, uh, I don't think we need a motion at this time, would you concur, Mark? Trader?
Yes, there, well, I mean, if you wanted, if the council wanted to ensure that it's on the next agenda, you can make a motion to continue it to the next agenda, I don't, if you want to do that, but you're not going to be otherwise taking any further action.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we have this on the next agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries, and what number is that?
Twenty.
Number twenty, we're gonna jump to number twenty. And welcome, Monica.
Thank you, can everybody hear me okay?
It's fine.
All right, hopefully there's no dog barking or anything else going on here. Um, all right, so I'm gonna do the presentation for the twenty twenty audit, I'm Monica Hauser from Hawkins Ash CPAs. I'm the partner in charge of your audit, um, I've worked with the city for quite a few years now. So, hopefully, everybody has the summary financials, I guess. Um, either that, or I can bring them up on screen if need be. Or if no, but if you don't want to follow along, I'm okay with that, too.
Is there a preference, Linda?
I think that it would be good to probably put it on the screen, just because we might have other people that want to look at this.
Okay.
Sure.
Just give me one second here. Where did they go? Okay, I'm working with multiple screens, so let me see if I can do this. Okay, so can everybody see the summary financial report?
Yes.
Yep.
Perfect, okay. So, we prepared this report for council presentation only. So this paragraph here, where it talks about not including all of the required disclosures, that's what it means, is we shorten this, just so we're not looking through sixty pages with you, trying to make it a little more condensed and easier to follow. So this is not something that should go out to the public.
Oh, then maybe you should take that off the screen. Because these meetings are recorded.
Anybody else have a preference or opinion on it, should I just stop it?
What she means, Linda, is this shouldn't be used for like, official purposes, it's presentation material only.
Okay.
Yeah. So if somebody asks for your financial statements, you're not going to give them this, you're going to give them your, the full ones with all the note disclosures, the thick book. So, we're gonna start talking numbers here. So, I'm gonna shrink that down. Um, you can see here, we have a combined balance sheet, so this is all of the funds of the city combined. Um, we'll kind of talk big picture here, total assets and deferred outflows of resources, we were at forty-five million, three hundred and six thousand, two seventy-one, at the end of twenty twenty. This is an increase of about three point four million from twenty nineteen. Biggest changes are, we had a lot of fixed asset additions, so capital assets here. Um, we had some increases in our taxes receivable. Nope, taxes, not taxes, special assessments and customer and other receivables, these two categories here increased last year. Otherwise, nothing real significant in there. Then if we talk liabilities, so this is what we owe people, total liabilities were eight million, forty-six thousand, which is an increase of one point one million from the prior year. No real major changes, we have some advances from other funds this year. Um, they're also showing up here as advances to other funds, we're just loaning money between the different funds. Um, deferred inflows of resources, and I kind of skipped the deferred outflows, that's not something we have a whole lot of control over, has to do with our actuarial studies, um, for the WRS, or the pension systems that we are part of. And then equity, so this net position number, the twenty-eight million, that represents water, sewer and stormwater equity at the end of the year. And I have more detail on those three funds in a little bit. And then we get into the general fund balance, so our general fund balance was one million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, now it's one million, seven hundred and one thousand. And, um, I'm not gonna bring up the full financials, but there's more detail in there that I just kind of want to point out. So we have a total general fund balance, then we have a piece that's non-spendable, so it's really already set aside, because it's been loaned out to other funds, or it's an interfund. So that's eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand of this, one point seven million. Then a hundred and thirty-three thousand is assigned. So what we have left is unassigned of six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-one. So that's kind of what we have available to spend. And we always do that as, as a percentage of our current year expenditures, just to kind of gauge where we're at. This year, that number is twelve percent. Um, so, you know, obviously, we had a lot, lot of transfers this year, so that kind of affects things, makes that number smaller. We did decrease our fund balance by about eighty-five thousand. So, you know, we're getting on the low end of that, there's not a magical number, people always ask me, there, as long as you're not whittling away and getting that down to zero and not building it up, but if you're, you know, using it for projects, and then you build it up for a few years, use it again, that's perfectly fine.
So, I'll just add to that, Monica, um, the memo that I put together today regarding the library roof, you saw like, um, the nine hundred thousand dollars was advances, of which like, half of it's already done, paid back this year, so that number's gonna bounce back rather quickly. So that was all intentionality, which we talked about when we did those advances to pay off some of that debt early in quarter four of twenty twenty.
Okay, then we get to the other fund balances, and I have more detail on what makes that up towards the back of the statement, so I won't talk about that now. So this graph shows our equity. The red bars represent general fund, so you can see pretty consistent, you know, drop just a hair. And then the blue is the other fund, so that's your TIF and some of those, so those really can fluctuate year to year. Then we get into, we're gonna talk general fund revenue, so we're showing twenty twenty budget to actual compared to twenty nineteen actual. So, we were over budget, which being over budget on the revenue side's a good thing, over budget about three hundred and two thousand, so that's the actual over budget here. And then if we compare it to twenty nineteen, we increased expend, or sorry, revenue, about three hundred and ten thousand. So, a lot of variables that make up that difference, um, I'll just remind you, the city got about a hundred thousand of the routes to recovery money in twenty twenty. Eighty-five thousand of that is sitting in the general fund here, so that's a big piece of why, you know, twenty nine, or twenty twenty's higher than twenty nineteen. Um, the other items, you know, our building permits and inspections were much higher, much higher than budget. The state shared taxes were higher, and then our state grants and payments, that's where that COVID routes to recovery money would be. So that's our revenue. Um, this is, this graph shows where our sources of revenue are coming from. Taxes and special assessments being sixty-three percent are the biggest piece of this pie. And then second is the intergovernmental revenue. Then we'll talk about general fund expenditures. So same thing where we have budget to actual to the prior year. So we budgeted five point five million, we spent five point four million. So we were below budget about fifty-five thousand. So again, good job budgeting, making sure we're not overspending that budget. We need to keep our eye on that, and you did a good job with that. And then if we compare 2020 to 2019, we had an increase of about five hundred and sixty thousand in 2020. And so I'd kind of mentioned, a lot of that's in the transfers. So some of that paying down some debt service, that sort of thing is in those transfers. Then this graph shows our expenditures, where the expenses are going. Biggest piece, public safety. Second is the transfers paying off debt service here, fifteen percent, and then public works. And general government's fifteen percent as well, so those three are pretty close. Alright, this is our water, sewer, and stormwater funds. Shows the income statement or revenues and expenses for the year. I like to focus on the operating income, making sure that's positive. If it's not, I'm going to tell you, you need to raise your rates, but you're at a positive for all of them. And you were, last year, you can see 2020 compared to 2019. Then we look at the change in net position, making sure, you know, we're still staying positive, or if we know, if it, there's a decrease, we know kind of what we're doing with that money. So that's water, sewer, and stormwater. This graph shows it just in that income comparison, sorry, operating income comparison. The blue bar is being water. Reddish is sewer, and then the green is stormwater. These are those other funds that I mentioned. So we got some special revenue funds that make up that balance, our debt service fund. Capital projects is a big piece of it, and then our TIF funds. So you can see here, you know, the TIF funds vary quite a bit year to year. We have three of them that are having a deficit right now. So hopefully, we'll recoup some of that with some increment here in the future. But that's where they're at now. And then this is our overall summary. So we issued, issued a clean or unmodified, unqualified opinion on the financial statements, so that's the best opinion you can get. It means we found everything to be fairly stated. And general capital assets, we added five hundred and six thousand of general capital assets. You can see the breakdown there of the different types of things we added. We added a little over a million dollars for water, sewer, and stormwater during 2020. And then our long-term debt. We decreased that long-term debt a little over a million dollars in 2020. So we have an outstanding GO debt balance of just slightly over ten million. And we're well below that magical twenty-two point seven million, which is our state debt limit. So we have some borrowing capacity there. And then the other two statements, refer to that other thinner book that I sent. Hopefully, everybody got. Those, it would state if we had any difficulties during the audit, any problems, those sorts of things would be identified in that book. We did not have any of those. Staff is very helpful to us, answers all of our questions, gets us stuff timely when we request it. So, and overall, it's a very clean audit. So we don't do a ton of journal entries, which is really nice. Dan, make sure that everything gets cleaned up before we get there. So kudos to the staff and everybody for making this a clean audit. That's all I have unless there's specific questions or anybody wants me to go into more detail.
I had, I had two questions. One was earlier on. The, the current portion of long-term debt showed a zero in nineteen and a sizable number in twenty. Just wanted to understand that.
I honestly think that's a typo. There should have been current portion last year, so I can look that up.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it was just, somehow it got picked up separately this year. Last year, it didn't on this summary report.
Okay, and then the other thing in the expenditures, where's the library? Shown?
So the library is in its own separate fund, I believe.
Okay.
So yeah, if you go to the page seven in the back, it's going to be under those special revenue funds.
Okay, so it is reflected in that pie chart graph of expenditures.
Correct, yep. That's, that was only the general fund, and we break out library separately.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Is there any questions or comments from anybody else? Teresa?
No.
Devin?
No.
Ryan?
No questions or comments.
Linda?
No questions. Good job, Dan and Steph.
I don't think we have to have a motion on anything, right? Thank you, Monica, for joining us tonight. If nobody has anything else, Monica, you are free to leave.
Thank you, and have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, number thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding the lead service line program modifications.
So back when we talked about this last, the DNR hadn't finalized our award amount. And fortunately, we've been awarded quite a bit more funding than initially thought, so we would like to open up the lead service line program to all customers with eligible service lines, rather than just those that have previously had their utility service line replaced. What this means is that if we have customers apply who have not had their utility side service line replaced, the, the water utility would have to fund that. There is funding available in the water utility for this work. The restriction was due to the fact that we couldn't fund the private side, so now that the funding is available, that possibility exists and can take place for additional customers. And then the second part of it is just to try to provide a little more options for, or some more options for the customers so that they can select the contractors while we still request the two quotes. If we change the language that allows them to choose a different than lower quote for some reason, we would just restrict the amount of reimbursement to what the lower quote was. This also prevents situations where two bidders may try to work together to artificially inflate the quotes or other situations that could arise. We're just trying to spread the dollars out as far as we can to try to get as many lead services as possible.
Any questions or comments from anyone? Bill?
No questions.
Teresa?
No.
Ryan?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Devin?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
I guess, let me add in, I didn't quite finish. The ability, the language adds the ability for the city to request a third quote if we deem it necessary based on the pricing. That's, again, trying to just be responsible with the funding available.
Is there a motion then?
I'll make a motion that we approve the recommended changes to the LSL program.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Okay, discussion and possible action, that motion passes. Discussion and possible action to approve renewal alcohol licenses 2021, 2022. I think this is the Jenny show part of the meeting.
I, yes, so there are no changes from 2020, the 2020 to 2021 renewal period. All of the licenses have been approved by Chief Markra, and also they have had inspections by Director Robinson for their premise, so there are no issues at this time with, from the city staff.
Any questions or comments, Linda?
I would make a motion to approve the renewal alcohol license.
Second.
Anybody have any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action to approve tobacco cigarette licenses 2021 to 2022.
And so I'll take this one also. Everything has been approved by city staff and for the tobacco cigarette license. This does not require any additional information for the premise or from the police chief. So this is just a application that they fill out.
Alright, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, that motion carries.
And I should ask one question. Is the motion to approve pending the outstanding charges?
I'll make that.
Is that correct?
I can make that.
Attorney, trader, just.
Do we, so do we know that there are, for some applicants, outstanding charges owed to the city?
Uh, yes, there is.
Alright, so yes, I would say that you would be amending your motion to include that condition, and if the second would accept that amendment.
I'll make that amendment to my motion.
And second is okay with that.
Hey, Jenny, do you have that?
I do. Thank you.
There's a motion, an amended motion, and a second to the amended motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion, City of Milton Class B alcohol license quota.
She's been on the job for about three months, and she has already unearthed things that have laid dormant for years, so here's her newest one.
Alright, so while reviewing all of the renewal applications, I did see a discrepancy regarding reserve licenses. So I'll give you a little bit of back history. In nineteen ninety-seven, the state of Wisconsin, they implemented a Class B liquor license quota that was based on how many were issued at that time. So since nineteen ninety-seven, there was two interpretations that I was able to find from 2012 and 2015, two reserve licenses were issued. Or reserve licenses are issued based on population. And then in 2015, one of those reserve license was given back to the city. It was no longer needed, and I shouldn't, I apologize, not one of the, they relinquished a regular license, not a reserve license, and then someone else who had a reserve license took that regular license. After 2015, there was only one reserve license issued, and from what I have been able to find, another one was not issued or available. I did reach out to the Department of Revenue, and they were able to go through the interpretations with me and verify that we should have two reserve licenses available within the city. And so our next portion of it is that we need to make this available to the city and businesses. In the past year, there have been two businesses that are, have been interested in one, so we will let them know. But it is first come, first served basis, and it's the first business that has a completely approved application that will receive it. Also, the information will be going on the website, too, so other businesses have access to it if they choose to. Reserve licenses are a little different. They authorize the same type of sales, but there is a ten thousand dollar initial fee, and then it can be transferred to a different premise. So that means if they receive a reserve license at one location, if they change locations, they do need to apply for it again, and another ten thousand dollars fee would need to be paid, and that is not a non-refundable fee.
Is there anything you need from us?
No, this is just information only. I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of this prior to it becoming available and being posted on the website.
And I guess I'll just ask if anybody has any questions. Ryan?
Nice work in your digging.
That, this was a long process to find out, find out if I was correct in my digging.
Okay, alright. So we don't have anything further on that issue yet. Our next item is discussion and possible action. Update to paid time off policy, and I think there was something about an extra memo or something.
And Inga can take this one. It's a very brief memo, so we kind of talked about it on the side. Maybe we could just bring it up on the screen, and we can, since folks probably haven't had the time to read it. The, these are, this is a conversation that we had last, or that I had with the council two weeks ago, so none of this is really new. But as I indicated during that discussion two weeks ago, we were bringing this forward, so. Go ahead, Inga. Is she still there?
Sorry, I lost all of my controls there for a second because I'm sharing tonight. Anyway, technology. So we worked on doing some updates to the PTO policy. As you can see in this memo, staff is proposing changes to the current PTO policy and the way time is accrued for employees. Currently, I, I don't know if I want to just read word for word what this memo says, but employees right now, they're receiving the full allotment of PTO upfront, rather than accruing it on a pay, per pay period basis, which is what we kind of do on the backend. So the issue comes up when an employee terminates their employment with the city, then we prorate what their PTO is. And sometimes how much they've used is more than what they've actually earned technically. So what we're looking at doing with this policy change is to have employees accrue PTO on a per pay period basis. Does that kind of sum it up?
Yep, yep. This is really just effectuating in words what we have always done on the backend so as to not cause confusion in the event that employee terminates their employment with the city of Milton. And when we say terminate, we mean take a new job, retire, or in the unfortunate cases in which they may be fired. And we have run across some situations in which individuals who have retired have, you know, had, had the perception that they had more PTO than they did. And it just, you know, we don't want to have those, that ill will at the end of somebody's employment. And unfortunately, we've had situations in which an employee was terminated and used more PTO time than they had actually accrued at that point in the year, which has resulted in us either not, either garnishing their last paycheck or just kind of eating it, which is never a good scenario. So we've had these conversations off and on, Dan and Inga and I, for probably the last three years. But, you know, with the accrual, it really came to its head last year during the pandemic when we were already kind of all spread all over the place, and staffing was kind of a challenge. And with the accrual process, or with the, the process that we have in place now, everybody's PTO kind of quote-unquote expires on July thirtieth. So there's kind of a mad rush at the end of that PTO cycle to use your PTO because it's use it or lose it. And we just want to get away from that. We want to be able to have folks spread their PTO out throughout the year, not feel rushed, not feel obligated to use it all right at the same time. So in conversations with department heads, we felt that this was kind of, you know, an appropriate action. And then I have had several one-on-one conversations with employees to kind of help them understand this process. It really doesn't change anything for anybody outside of folks over in PD because their accrual basis is January one to December thirty-first. We're moving everybody to just a pay period accrual process. So I've had a chance to speak to, I guess, three of the four. I guess, three of the four, uh, folks in PD that this impacts. And, uh, you know, kind of talk through the process with them. So I think everybody's on the same page. It makes things a little bit cleaner. Eliminates the potential for hurt feelings at the end of employment and protects the city in the event that somebody terminates their employment unwillingly, I guess, uh, in, in the middle of the PTO cycle. And this also, this policy also reflects the conversation that we had last week about the transition period during this weird kind of pan- pandemic time. So. So if approved, we'll start this process on August 1st. Employees are, have been made aware that this is coming. So they can plan accordingly. And we've already printed off individual sheets for every employee in the organization and provided that to them. Under, with the understanding that, hey, this hasn't been approved yet, but we want to give you as much time as possible to prepare your summer schedule with this new information. So I think we've done a good job of, of kind of getting to this point. Nobody's yelled at me.
And, um, i- if the council does want to approve the policy as written, then, um, just include in the motion that an effective date would be August 1st.
I would move approval of the revised PTO policy with an effective date of August 1st.
Second.
Okay.
A motion and a second. Any discussion further? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right, are we on May financial statements? Is that where I'm at?
We're on the phased, number 18.
Okay. Oh my gosh, this is way at the bottom of the sheet. Okay. Discussion, direction, possible action regarding the Milton Phase reopening plan. Gosh, we don't want to.
So, uh, as kind of indicated in the memo, gave a little brief history of, uh, we created the phase reopening plan in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and the safer at home order. And then the subsequent kind of Rock County guidelines that were created. Uh, we have been closely following Rock County, obviously, throughout this process. And then the news broke, um, I think two weeks ago that Rock County would be, um, I don't want to know, I don't, I don't know what the right word is, not canceling, but suspending or phasing out their phase reopening plan. So we wanted to put this on the agenda tonight to see if the city of Milton wanted to follow suit by suspending their phase reopening plan. We're at a good point right now in the city where, uh, if the council chooses to suspend the phase reopening plan, uh, as I outlined in the memo, it really only affects three items. It, it affects, uh, in-person meetings for council and committees. It affects the ability to, uh, rent park pavilions on consecutive days. And then it somewhat affects, but not really, uh, the kind of the masking policy for the city of Milton. We chose to adopt the CDC guidelines a few weeks ago, uh, that if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask, but if you're unvaccinated, you should wear a mask. We, you know, keep that on the honor system. Um, and, and hope folk, folks, uh, adhere to that. And, and we would keep that practice in place as well, moving forward. Uh, but if we choose to suspend the phase reopening plan, um, that would effectively mean that we would start meeting in person again and that we could, um, uh, rent park pavilions, uh, on consecutive days during the weekends or during the weeks.
And it doesn't, uh, preclude various committees for if they decide like, hey, we don't want to meet in person. We would like to have a Zoom meeting.
Right.
Unless that requires some other change, attorney trador, that I'm not aware of.
No, that's, that's that the election of any municipal body, whether it's a committee, the, the city council, you have the option of, uh, meeting virtually. That's been the opinion, that opinion came about because of COVID. But legally, in my, in my opinion, it doesn't matter whether it's COVID or not. It's, it's whether or not it meets the open meeting requirements. And the opinion so far of the Attorney General's office is, is that such meetings do?
Yeah. So, so for, to Anissa's point, uh, in, in, uh, in our CDA meeting yesterday, made them aware that thi- this was going to be on the agenda tonight. And they asked the question, well, can we continue to meet virtually? If a meeting, you know, if we believe that the meeting is going to be 10, 15 minutes, or that we don't need to all gather around a table to look at exhibits. And the answer was yes. And, and, you know, folks on the CDA felt comfortable with that. We had the same conversation with Plan Commission today at four o'clock. Depending on the agenda, it might be easier to meet and plan, uh, to, easier to meet virtually. Plan Commission's going to be a little bit more difficult to wrangle because we don't know, uh, what those agendas are going to look like. But, uh, you know, those, those conversations could happen for historic preservation or parks and recreation or police commission too. So. So that's a good point, Mayor. Thank you.
So. Thoughts, Bill Wilson?
I, I don't feel strongly one way or another. I, I prefer, uh, having a, uh, a, a virtual option available and understand that, that does make it, uh, uh, the hybrid kind of a framework, uh, does present some, uh, technical difficulties potentially. You know, I would prefer having a model that allowed for, um, uh, virtual participation in a Zoom kind of a framework. We already have allowed for a teleconference kind of a thing, a phone-in. Uh, and, uh, so I guess, I think that, uh, that would be acceptable, uh, for the time being while we worked out the potential. I think one of the things that we found with, um, having the Zoom meetings is that we do extend the ability of some people to participate. And consequently, um, you know, I'd like to see, uh, that as being an option. Uh, as for, uh, comfort in, in actually attending meetings, uh, I'm comfortable doing so whenever it's deemed safe. And it seems to be that we're at that point.
Devin?
I, I would agree with Bill.
Uh, Teresa?
I'm comfortable either way. I certainly have found this to be advantageous, although, uh, you know, I know when we were talking about the, uh, sewer changes on Highway 26, there were a lot of people that really wanted to be able to be there face to face. So there are certain issues that arise in which people want to be there. And so it may be, uh, you know, a very issue dependent. And, um, yeah, I, you know, we may have to look at it further, depending on the agenda.
Okay, thanks, Linda.
I kind of agree with what everybody else has said. Um, and you know, as far as going back to in-person meetings, I mean, I, and I, I don't mind if we do either or both. Um, I just kind of feel like there was a lot of meetings where we were there and nobody else was. And so I would not be in favor of ceasing virtual meetings. I think a hybrid model is, I, I think it's worth it. We, we have been able to do this with the phone and I mean, my goodness, there's, I mean, uh, everybody does this. It's, it's one of our modern conveniences. So I guess, and, and besides that, if you're like me and you have to go back and forth, it's nice to be able to take your Zoom with you if you have to be someplace else.
Yep. Ryan?
I pretty much agree with what was, uh, said. Um, I think that we've seen definitely a lot higher attendance at these since we've been doing it virtually. But I also think it makes sense to, uh, look dead and back and, and phasing out the policy. Because, or phasing out the, um, yeah, reopening plan because county phased out theirs. So I think we should follow suit. Uh, but I do think it'd be nice to look at some type of a hybrid option where we can have a virtual element too, so we can keep having more community engagement. Though I understand that might mean some costs we'd have to put into being able to do that.
Okay, so. Uh, the question is, what do you want to do about the Milton Fee Phase reopening plan? Are you ready to suspend it?
May I offer a suggestion? And I have no idea if this is going to work. Folks may, may remember Steve Jensen, very wonderful, nice man who lives here in Milton, who has volunteered a ton of his time to the city of Milton, uh, for doing, uh, you know, work on our AV equipment in our, in our, uh, council chambers. Wonderful guy. What if we said that, um, we would, we would continue, we could, we could phase out the, or we could, uh, you know, suspend the, uh, Milton Phase reopening plan, kind of return to business as usual. Uh, but we will keep meetings virtual until such time that we can develop a hybrid model. No later than our meeting on July 6th. Because the July 6th meeting is likely going to be the presentation of the Wisconsin Policy Forum. And I think we're going to want that one in person. Uh, but that, I'm just throwing it out there. So what that would really mean is that we have a special meeting next week and a special meeting the following week. Both of those meetings are probably going to be 15 minutes or no longer. So virtual probably makes sense anyways. Um, so maybe that's what we could do. Uh, and then maybe at that 29th meeting, we can bring forth at least a plan on how we could develop a hybrid model with Steve's input, maybe.
I think that's a good idea.
Just, it's just a suggestion. I don't know if it's going to work or not, but, huh, you know, the hybrid model sounds wonderful in concept. You know, we've thought about it and we, we've tried to do it for staff meetings and we, you know, we saw what happened at the fire commission meeting. It, it's challenging with feedback and delays and, um, you know, who can talk and when, and when you're not all in the same place, it's, it's, it's challenging. But um, obviously other entities are doing it, or at least we think they are. So if we have a little bit of time to figure it out, I think we probably can. Inga's really smart.
And, and just to be clear, when we're talking about a hybrid model, the expectation is that someone can watch the meeting virtually, but also participate. Is that correct?
Yes, sure, sure.
And maybe you can use the TV in the council chambers for some of that.
Yeah, it's, um, it's going to.
Talking part, that's going to be hard.
And trying to get that back into the system to record it and broadcast it out. So I, I've already started working with Steve on trying to figure it out a little bit. He's 10 times smarter than I am. So we'll see what we can figure out there. And then just with the reopening plan, is the intent, if it is suspended, to continue with face masks in community facilities if they're not vaccinated yet?
I think that was the intent.
Okay.
Al, you're froze.
Yeah, on an honesty basis.
Okay.
Right. Now you're unfroze.
Am I frozen?
No, no, Al was froze.
Frozen. And he's frozen again.
I like that.
He's stunned. There he is.
There. Now, now he has this little cute little smile on his face.
He's frozen again.
Okay, Ryan?
I'll basically make the motion what Al suggested along the lines of suspending the reopening plan, but continuing, you know, trying to, or meeting virtually until we can come up with a hybrid plan and that's be no later than July 6th, I think he said?
That's good.
Second.
And it's not done yet, I don't think.
Oh, and also the part, um, that Inga said about the mask, I'll just have you craft that word, wording, Inga.
Well, Jenny's taking the minute, so good luck with that.
How did you, how did you phrase it, Inga?
Um, the face mask portion of the reopening plan will continue.
Based on honesty.
Yeah.
For those who are not vaccinated.
Yeah.
Do you want it to follow CDC guidelines or just for the vaccination?
CDC guidelines. Would be better, better way to put it. Does that make, motion make sense?
Yes. The, follow the mask, follow mask guidelines as directed by the CDC.
Does you mind reading that motion back? So whoever seconded it can get the whole thing?
Yes. Uh, suspend the City of Milton Phase reopening plan and continue meeting virtually until a hybrid model can be, oh, I missed that word. Can thank you, can be developed, um, and by the July 6th.
Not, yeah, not to extend beyond that?
Extend beyond July 6th? Or none? Okay.
It doesn't work.
Second.
And then with the part of the mask.
And follow mask guidelines as directed by the CDC.
Thank you. Does that work, Mark?
Yes, that's fine.
And any other, any questions?
I came back on, but he's still frozen again, it looks like.
I can't even find, oh, there he is. Every time somebody leaves and re-enters, my, my squares move. It took me forever to find Howie.
Well, in a month will be in person, it seems. So you don't worry about squares.
So there's a motion, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, we got a plan, a little bit different. All right, um, general item.
Can I have our number 19?
Okay. Number 19, review of May financial statements. I'm pretty sure I tried to do that before.
Nothing too dramatic there, but, um, there's obviously been a lot of, uh, activity that's happened in the first five months of the year. And, and with some of the council action tonight, um, depending on what employees choose to do with, um, they choose to get paid out portions of their PTO at the end of July. That, that dollar amount could affect, um, some of the bottom line. And there's been lots of, uh, pluses and minuses and, and employment changes both at City Hall and at Public Works. So there's going to be a little bit more flux, I think, in 2021 than we're kind of used to. And it's just very difficult at this point to take all the pluses and minuses and see how they actually shake out. So just don't want any surprises as we kind of normalize with a new, new staffing structure, so to speak, um, in the next month or so.
Are there any questions? All right, did I, did I get to all the numbers? Anybody see any numbers I've missed on the agenda?
Nope.
Got through one through 20.
Okay, okay. 21, general item. Linda?
I just, I have a question about the roadwork that we're going to be doing on Blanche Drive. There's a lot of multifamily housing right there on Blanche Drive. Is it the property owners that will get notices? Or are each, do we have apartment owners or condo owners that will be getting information? I, I was just kind of wondering because it's so multifamily.
The, the property owners get the notices.
No, no, probably print them off and, and notify, put like a little piece of paper in their tenants' doors or something. Cause people are going to have to move their cars. A lot of people park on there.
That's why I was kind of wondering because, you know, I, I know like the, the one multifamily area, they have, each place has a parking lot, a parking space and a garage. But I don't think that they're used to using them. And once it starts, I mean, they're going to have to, I just don't want to hear any complaints.
Well, you might.
You probably will.
Don't come knocking at my door.
It's no different than when a snow, there's snow though. I mean, they gotta move then, so. Okay.
The contractor usually puts a tag on the doors too, if it's like a 24, 48 hour notice.
Okay.
And then if they're going to blacktop, they sometimes put the, in the terrace. We have a construction meeting, we can ask them to put in the terrace, like, don't park, we're going to blacktop, you know, for some individual notification.
Yeah, the paving contractors that have worked in the city in the past normally always put, uh, no parking signs up. Usually a week in advance of the work and have the eight range of the week that the work may take place. So people are aware that that part is coming. The driveways, um,
The driveways, those can be a little more challenging with access for residents to get into their property or their homes or apartments. But they all work through it. And I think complaints, complaints unfortunately sometimes are inevitable, but we do the best we can.
But you could always just go door to door yourself the next few weeks and let them know it's coming.
Yeah. Send me the information, I'll just pass it out.
Any other general items?
Thank you to everyone who is supporting our local businesses. They're, they're busy and that's just really wonderful. Be sure to keep our emergency service people and your thoughts. It's been tough. And they're all very much appreciated. Along, along with our public works people too.
They're probably pretty tired, some public safety employees right now. Any other general items? Committee reports? Anyone? Anyone?
We didn't have a quorum at historic preservation, so nothing really there.
Oh, I think we're good, we have, um, on the next meeting agenda, maybe I'll remember to have that on there, to have somebody be appointed. And maybe that'll help you with your quorum.
Missing one right now, so.
Okay, we have some interest in that, so. Staff reports, Howie?
Well, mostly we're just working on, you know, some of the hot weather things. We're doing, taking care of storm sewers. And we'll probably do some patching, they'll probably start painting streets next week. Cause we like to get at least Madison Avenue done for the 4th of July. And I guess, you know, it's mostly, it's otherwise, it's just projects. Little League tournament went really well. People were happy with it last week at the parks, so. Other than that, it's a lot of just regular items going on. Lot of watering trees. We are replacing the trees down at Merchant Row this week too.
There's no baseball tournament up at the 4th of July?
Nope, there's no, so far there's no softball tournament, yeah.
Okay. Um, chief?
I'm not sure I have too much. Been pretty routine since the last time we talked. We're still working short, yeah, we're tired, but still working through a process of getting somebody hired. We started a background today, so fingers crossed.
All right, good. Yeah, we gotta get that position filled or they're taking away that money from us at the state.
Yeah, that's not gonna be an issue. We'll be okay there.
Um, Dan?
Actually, I do have a few other things. We submitted the paperwork for the ARPA money, the American Recovery Act money, we're getting about 589,000. Next week, Monday, the revaluation letters get mailed, an open book. Jenny, correct me if I'm wrong on the dates, it's June 24th through August 2nd. With border review at the end of August, those dates are in the letter, so. That's all I have for housekeeping. And then the budget, or not a budget, the audit as usual is not just, that is a effort by everyone in the city. And it makes my job a lot easier, so thank you.
The open book is through August 11th.
Ashley, I am not forgetting you.
Um, we launched a 100 women campaign, fundraising campaign for our story gardens because we had great success with our library remodel, additional that. So if any woman is interested in being part of that and being recognized in the gardens, they can reach out to me. We've already had 20 women so far, so that's awesome. And then our summer reading is going amazing. We have had over 250 children under the age of 12 sign up for our reading challenge. And we're busy, people are checking out a lot of books. And we're not quite back full to our full operations, but people are coming back to the library and we're having lots of fun, so it's good to see.
Nice. Jenny, anything?
Oh, right now, just finishing up the alcohol licensing. And then I have reached out to city staff about a special event process. So that, once they get, receive feedback from the special event process options, then that will go to attorney, merch trader for review and then go to council. But otherwise, we did have our first border review meeting on June 8th and that went well. So now we are adjourned till August 26th. So that is all that I have right now. I haven't found anything else. No other new or answers.
Well, give us some time to process what you have found and then we'll just move on to the next.
I'll take a break.
Inga?
Um, the application period closed last week for the part-time administrative assistant position we're recruiting for, for City Hall. And we're doing interviews this week and we'll proceed through the recruitment process after those.
All right, Mark E.
Like Howie mentioned, we'll have a pre-construction meeting here, hopefully in the next week for Blanche Conwood Drive, Blanche Drive and Conwood Lane. See the sewer televising back.
You received it back?
Yeah, we haven't, I haven't watched it yet though, so it's exciting. Other than that, I think we're gonna have a real busy summer and fall here with construction between the projects that we know about and maybe some that we don't yet, so.
Al, is Al with us? Is he on the phone?
I'm here, I'm here. I think it's ironic that my internet, my internet's not out. I can see all you guys and I can hear all you guys on the computer, but you're all frozen. And obviously you can't see or hear me, so I called in. So it's ironic that that came up during the conversation about whether we should return to in-person meetings or not. All these 12 months and I've, 12 plus months and I haven't had this problem, but now I do. So anyways, I, I sent out the press release from Governor Evers's office yesterday. That was, you know, nice to see and not, not in any attempt at vanity, but I have a Google alert set up for my name, just, you know, cause I wanna know what people are saying about me. And it's amazing how many news outlets across the country have picked up that press release. I got a Google alert this morning from a newspaper in Detroit that was talking about that press release. So pretty cool that we're kind of on the national scale with that. That's exciting for, for Milton. And although it was, you know, it was, it was never a foregone conclusion. We were pretty confident that CQC would be awarded that grant or that technically we would be awarded that grant. But it's, you know, certainly a sigh of relief on CQC's part that they, they got it. We had a long meeting, gosh, was it yesterday? These days run together with folks from WISDOT and CQC on, on timelines and next steps. And there'll be a couple of pieces that we have to do, a couple of agreements that we have to sign that'll come before the council in order to effectuate that. But the timeline's shaking out to, to match CQC's plans for development. So they will start on the rail as soon as possible. And as you're aware, we have their site plan and CUP scheduled for a special meeting on the 29th. And they'll start construction, you know, on the first phase of their first phase relatively shortly after that. And they continue, they still plan to be up in operations by the fall of next year. Yeah, so that's all coming together nicely. As Mark just kind of alluded to, we've got a lot of development inquiries within the city. We've had four separate conversations about four separate residential developments in the last probably 30 days, all on separate tracts of land. So that's a good thing, cause housing is obviously a need in, in our community and in our region. So we're, we're excited to see that coming to fruition. And kind of as I mentioned in the Courier article, you know, with places like CQC and things like that coming in, hopefully we see an uptick in commercial development as well. So I agree with Mark, it's probably gonna be a busy year. And I have a feeling, you know, we've been saying that for the last three years. I just think that's the new normal. It's just gonna be busy. And that's good. It's, it's, it's good for the taxpayers and it's good for our economic diversification and, and how we go about running our, our community in a, in effective and efficient way with smart growth in mind, with, you know, the eye always on keeping the tax rates as low as possible. And the only way to do that is to keep development coming in. So it's a bit of a double edged sword, but you know, we, as long as the development is, is of, of quality and, and of, you know, kind of follows the Milton way, we're, we're in good shape. So I think we're, we're definitely keeping that, keeping that alive.
So, um, job recruiters are calling you too, is that what you said?
Well, you know, labor shortage is, is a national issue and it is definitely, oh, job recruiters are calling me personally?
Yes, yeah.
They've been doing that for seven years. No, I'm just kidding. Right, no, but, but, I mean, labor shortage is a humongous issue in our nation, especially in our, in our region. And that's gonna continue to be, if there's something that slows us down, that's what it's gonna be. And you know, there's a lot of people that are working tirelessly to try to solve that problem, but it is a, it is a complex issue, so. But no, I don't have any, any plans on going anywhere anytime soon, unless you guys do.
Did I miss anybody on a staff report? Just know that it's me, not you, if I missed you. Think we got everybody covered. Oh, I almost hate to bug you about team building, it's 801, but we're all here, so. This is super simple, super simple. Name one thing you are really excited about doing this summer that you could not do last summer. He may have already done it.
Sorry, I can't, I can't, I can't see everybody, so I'll just jump in. That way I don't talk over somebody. You took it, I, I, you already, you, you said it at the end, I already did it. I've gone to my first brew game, so I was probably five the last time I didn't go to a, a brew game during any, any season and last, up until last year. So going to a game this, two weekends ago was certainly something I couldn't have done last year, so.
Ryan?
Seeing the 4th of July fireworks. With the kids.
Yep.
I'm gonna say, oh, go ahead, Bill.
Ethel and I usually go to a place called Shitakwa in New York for a week. And it's, uh, an old time, goes back in the 1800s. An old time place where you go to outdoor lectures and things like that. It was canceled last year for, you know, I, I guess it got canceled during the war at some point, but, World War II. But it'll be nice to go back there. Looking forward to it.
Yeah, for sure. Linda?
I have to say, just seeing my family, we, we just got to see Johnny and Shannon and my two grandsons. And pretty soon I'm gonna be hitting the road and gonna go see my sisters and my mom. And I'm pretty excited about it, really.
Thanks, Linda.
Outdoor concerts, you know, I haven't really scheduled them yet, but there weren't any last year. So I look forward to them.
I'll piggyback on that and say indoor concerts. We have Maroon 5 tickets, but it's been rescheduled now three times, so we're ready.
Oh, that'll be so much fun. Okay, I'll go. So I did something last weekend that I normally wouldn't even do during a pandemic, but, or outside of a pandemic, but I had something Friday night, Saturday and Sunday, like three social events in a row. It just took all the life out of me, but it was super fun. I have found that the more I socialize in person, the more tired I get. So I get tired with Zoom and I get tired socializing, so I'm still adjusting. But it was, it was fun to see different people, friends and family and yeah, just hang out.
I'll go. I complain about it all the time because the course is brutal, but it's a Milton tradition, the optimist 10K. Looking forward to that, kind of.
I am cheering you on. My, the most I can do is like four miles in any one setting, and that's walking. That is not running. I don't think my knees will even allow me to run anymore, but. Oh my God, no, that this is something that has never, ever happened, that Mark. This doesn't matter if it's a pandemic or not, Mark Schrader never goes this early.
Yeah, I gotta leave right now, so. Well, this summer, looking forward to our daughter participating in the summer play at Janesville Parker.
Oh, cool.
Didn't have that last year.
Yeah, I love that.
Well, I, I got to go to Alaska to visit Connor, so. Got to go deep sea fishing, saw Mount McKinley, saw 29 moose and did a 10 and a half mile mountain climb.
Oh my God, good for you.
Wow.
That's amazing.
Yeah, it was supposed to be last year, but it had way to till this year, so.
29 moose?
Yeah.
It lived to tell about it.
Yeah. Wow.
Wow.
That's something.
Sounds like a lot of fun.
It was, yeah.
And a beautiful trip.
So a couple of weeks ago, we went to the Milwaukee Public Museum for the first time in well over a year. A lot of the exhibits are different or closed still at that point. But we're hoping to go back and hopefully they'll be able to open up more and feel more comfortable doing that soon.
Is that the one that has like the old time downtown Milwaukee?
Yeah, yeah, so one five-year-old was a little bummed the candy store was closed, but hopefully it'll be open again soon.
Yep, I love that museum.
I will go, is the Rock River Thresher. So I've been going since, I don't even remember the first time that I went. And my dad and I go every year, so that was, he was a little bummed that we were just not able to go last year. So he's really excited about it this year.
I bet. Who are we missing?
Hmm, is there another Mark in the room?
I don't know, travel. Even using the grocery store pickup, I actually went in the grocery store in person the other day. That was different, kinda like in a while. I don't know. Aren't you coaching baseball? Yeah, I'm coaching baseball, soccer, did that, that was fun again. Missed that, actually, that's a good one, Howie. Missed that last year with the kids. Missed getting kicked in the shins in soccer and.
Dan, did you go?
No, not yet.
Okay, good.
I, I did it this weekend though. I hope to do it 10 more times before the summer falls off. Said at Wrigley Field, it was 40,000 people. It was incredible.
Wow.
Any fights?
You mean American Family Field North or South, I mean?
No, it's, it's in the 773 zip code. It's Wrigley Field. It's been called that for over 100 years.
Oh, you're just the best, funniest council ever. All right, did we, we got everybody, right?
Well, Lauren Cox has been with us for several meetings. I'm wondering if she doesn't wanna participate. Nope.
The silence is deafening.
Free speech, I mean, this.
It's everything you say and don't say, right? Let's see, our next meeting, I, I don't think we have it listed on the agenda. When is it? Anyone? Anyone, anyone?
June twenty-second, we said.
Yeah, so now it looks like June twenty-second and I think we said five PM, is that correct?
Okay, June twenty-second, five PM, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
Anyone opposed? All right, I'll just keep seeing you every week. It's like a group date night.
Have a nice week, everybody.
Bye.